Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, June 19th, 2025. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley?
President.
Ms. Mensah?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Amateur Radio Field Day. And Councilmember Harper has volunteered to read that one.
Moment of silence, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. We forgot the moment of silence. Thanks for a reminder. We'll have our moment of silence at this time. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to the proclamation. Mr. Harper?
Thank you. Just a bit of background on this before I read the proclamation. Last year, the mayor asked me to attend the Amateur Radio Field Day that's put on every year, and it is an international event. And I was astounded at the proficiency at which our ham radio operators conduct communications, which is very useful in emergency situations. So I'm attending that event this year, and I thought it would be nice for my attendance to be able to present the leadership of those organizations of proclamation. Whereas, the Amateur Radio Field Day is an annual event where ham radio operators demonstrate their skills and service to the community. And whereas, the event provides an opportunity to showcase the capabilities of amateur radio in times of emergency response and provides a platform for community outrage. And whereas, the participation in the field day demonstrates the dedication of amateur radio operators to public service and the advancement of radio communication. And whereas, the event encourages participation from all ages and skill levels, from newcomers to seasoned operators. And whereas, this year, the Cedar Valley Amateur Radio Club and the Collins Amateur Radio Club will be participating in this year's field day at the northeast corner of C Avenue Northeast and Collins Road on June 28th at 1:00 p.m. and concluding on June 29th at noon. A continuous 23-hour event. I now, therefore, I, Grant Harper, on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abou Osley, do hereby proclaim June 28th and 29th as Amateur Radio Field Day in the city of Marion and encourage all residents to visit the Field Day site and learn more about the science, skill, and service of amateur radio.
Thank you, Grant. Next item is our first public forum. We have two public forums on the agenda. The first one is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Anyone who has comments related to an item that is on the agenda with a public hearing, there'll be time for comments at that time. Then there will be another comment period at the end of the meeting for all other comments. I would like to review the rules for public forum comments. Please, if you plan to address council, please complete the yellow card on the end of the table. Hand it to the city clerk before speaking. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have handouts, submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Once you're called forward, please step up to the podium, speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. You're encouraged to state your name, address, and group affiliation. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, you're encouraged to address the council as mayor and members of council. All persons wishing to speak will be provided with a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is imminent threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please avoid repeating comments or points made by previous speakers. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct that interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. And failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Thank you to everyone for cooperation and adhering to these rules of procedure. We'll open up the public forum section at this point for comments on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone's here to address council, please come forward at this time. Okay, we'll ask the city clerk if we received any comments outside the meeting.
We did receive one comment in advance of the meeting from a resident in support of Resolution 32433 regarding Nottingham Hills 10th Edition. They just wrote with concerns about the tall grass on the lot and asked that it be maintained.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address council? Okay, we'll close the public forum. Proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. This will include items A1 through E5 and resolution numbers 32419 through 32436.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E5, resolutions 32419 through 32436. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-19, amending Section 229-20 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to the possession and use of fireworks. This is our second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-19, amending Section 229-20 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to the possession and use of fireworks. This is to bring our local code in compliance with the state regulations. Any discussion on this? Steve?
Just again, I'd like to make a comment I've done once before, and that is the general concern I have about our state government continuing to water down the home rule and allowing cities to be making decisions which they feel are in the best interest of their citizens. That has now been taken away for this matter.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else?
Yes, your honor.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to say that I agree with Steve's perspective on this. And it's a disturbing trend that while we have to comply, I think we are lessening our service level to our residents who have expressed strenuous concerns about this over the last several years.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance number 25-19, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 25-19.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to final consideration of ordinance number 25-19. Discussion on suspending the rules. Okay, all those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-19, amending Section 229-20 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to the possession and use of fireworks. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-19, amending the code of ordinances related to possession and use of fireworks. Any discussion on the final consideration? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-20, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Section 238-13 regarding sound amplifiers in parks, Sections, Section 313-3.12 regarding operation of golf carts, Section 133-1 and 133-19 regarding snowplowers for hire, and Section 268-9 regarding private hauler licenses. Second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 25-20, amending the code of ordinances, including Section 238-13, Section 313-3.12, Section 133-1 and 133-19, and Section 268-9. Discussion? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, periodically, I continue to have citizens ask about the use of golf carts in the city, and I continue to say they're not allowed. But on this piece here where it's got the section being amended about regarding operation of golf carts, can somebody tell me exactly what that is referring to? Because I don't have that in front of me, and I don't recall what it said.
Right now, the code reads that it's only for disability-related uses, and it requires the placard.
Okay.
So this just adds the language, as shown on the screen, in parentheses, or similar documentation to verify disability. So the use is still for disability purposes only.
So the basic...
The use of...
Definition is not changing.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? By the way, I see golf carts driving around. There was one down my street the other day. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-20, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding discontinuance of the Public Works Board. We'll open the public hearing. Can we have a brief presentation? City attorney, okay.
Yes, your honor, just very briefly. This was not a decision that the Public Works Board entered lightly. They had several discussions about this before voting at their May meeting. At that time, they did vote four to zero to discontinue the board. The purposes behind that decision were primarily because things that were previously handled by the Public Works Board are now being handled by staff. And additionally, we have a lot of standard operating procedures and policies that take care of the other decisions that they needed to make at that time.
Thanks, Kara. Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward to the podium, please. Please come forward. Please state your name and address, and then...
Joe Spinks, 3165 29th Avenue. And it's been a pleasure to serve on this board. I'm glad that we were able to do good work to get the new refuge system going and all that. And so it was nice to go from council on to something that was as active as this board was. But I see the need for it not to be continued. But anyway, it was a pleasure working on it, and thank you for all your hard work to get this implemented. Thank you.
Thank you for all your service, Joe, on the board, and all your service on council prior to that. And we really appreciate your contributions and your value that you've added.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if they've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Okay. With that, we'll note that for the record, close the public hearing, proceed to the motion on the ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-21, repealing various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 12, Article 11, regarding the Public Works Board, Section 50-2E regarding mayor appointments, and Section 50-34B2 regarding city manager appointments and supervision of other personnel. And this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-21, repealing various sections of the code of ordinances, including Chapter 12, Article 11, Section 50-2E, and Section 50-34B2. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, ordinance number 25-21 is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the sale of portions of the vacated West East Alley between 9th and 10th Streets and between 4th and 5th Avenues. We'll open the public hearing and take our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Back on May 22nd, this subject alley was vacated and therefore turned into real property, which now can be sold to adjacent property owners. As part of that, following our policy on real property and selling it, we reached out to those adjacent property owners. We did receive communication back from those that own property on the northern half of that alley. Those on the southern half did not respond with interest in taking on their fair share. So with that, we proceeded in recalculating the purchase prices. So on the screen there in orange, a 10-by-70-foot swath of that alley would go to Baron Rentals LLC for just over $1,200. The other two properties there in green and blue are both owned by Mark and Laura Steffick. So each individual parcel would gain their adjacent portion of the alley there. Again, because we did not receive responses back from those on the south side of the alleyway, we are proposing to sell all that 10-foot width adjacent to the northern property owners' portion.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if anyone has provided comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Nicole?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Your honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32437, approving the sale of a portion of the vacated West East Alley between 9th and 10th Streets and between 4th and 5th Avenues adjacent to 905 5th Avenue, Marion, Iowa, on behalf of Baron Rentals LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32437, approving the sale of a portion of the vacated West East Alley between 9th and 10th Street and 4th and 5th Avenues adjacent to 905 5th Avenue. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32438, approving the sale of a portion of the vacated West East Alley between 9th and 10th Streets and between 4th and 5th Avenues adjacent to 967 and 995 5th Avenue, Marion, Iowa. And this is Michael R. and Laura P. Steffick.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32438, approving the sale of the portion of the vacated alley adjacent to 967 and 995 5th Avenue, to Michael and Laura Steffick. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 32438?
We need another roll call.
We will have the roll call. Thank you, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Okay, the ayes have it. The resolution is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32439, extending temporary ordinance 23-26 only as to Section 3.82 relating to the use of gas stations on Tower Terrace Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32439, extending the temporary ordinance 23-26 only as to Section 3.82 relating to the use of gas stations on Tower Terrace Road. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If approved, and we extend this, do we have an idea of the timeline of... I know it has to go through the process and stuff, but do we have an estimation of how many months that takes till we get to a point where we take this off?
So yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission had discussion at their meeting on June 10th. They will be hearing draft code language at their July 8th meeting. Following that, council will consider setting the public hearing date at the second meeting in July for that first meeting in August. And then we'll go through those three readings. So it should be concluding September.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 32439, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-15, approving an amendment to Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-15, approving the amendment to Chapter 340 of the code of ordinances related to the zoning definitions. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-16, approving an amendment to Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to district uses and bulk regulations. And this is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-16, amending Chapter 340 of the code of ordinances related to district uses and bulk regulations. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 25-16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-17, approving an amendment to Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to architectural design standards, parking and loading regulations, and landscaping screening standards. This is our final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-17, amending Chapter 340 of the code of ordinances related to architectural design standards, parking and loading regulations, and landscaping and screening standards. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 25-17, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-18, approving an amendment to Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to certain specific use standards. This is also the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-18, amending Chapter 340 of the code of ordinances related to certain use-specific standards. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 25-18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is the second public forum, which is a time set aside for comments on any topic for the members of the public. If anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Okay, we'll close this portion of the meeting and then proceed to council comments. We'll start with Councilmember Brandt.
I don't have to care. I have nothing.
Okay.
Well, it's summer, so I have a list.
Oh, go ahead.
But unrelated to summer, I do want to give a shout out to Team Marion's Chuck Whitehead for his help on a big community constituent situation. And he, that had been lingering for quite some time, and he was able to get that resolved in a matter of weeks. Week or two. So I just want to, we sent him a note, but I just wanted to thank him from my perspective and also from the homeowner. Last Saturday, we had, we partnered, or not partnered, we had guests from Corridor Corporate Games out at Sunrise Yoga. So we had over 250 yogis out at the park on Saturday morning. It was absolutely perfect weather. It was just a great group of folks that were there. And we hope that they'll come back and join us because we had a lot of new people. So hoping we invited them back, hope they'll be there. And we're back again this Saturday. So hope to see people at 7:30. And then next Wednesday at 6:00, this coming Wednesday at 6:00, we will have Down Dogs in Uptown, the second round of that. Our first one, we had around 30 folks. Where we moved from the north alley into the central plaza. It was perfect. It was a warm evening, but we had shade. And it was just families having a big picnic over by us, too. So it was a great time. And then thank you to Kim, who has offered to help out with the garden as one of our volunteers. And also just remind people, if you like to garden or would like to help out with a community, a community garden can always use help with just weeding and tending. It's not more than an hour or two a week at most. So contact me if you'd like to participate or if you have a group that would like to participate.
Okay.
That's me.
Thank you.
Oh, and office hours, thanks. I will be at office hours on Saturday. But no to the time amendment. I won't be there till 9:00 because we have to wrap up yoga, and then I gotta scoot on down to there. So I can't believe Amber actually got that noted from my little note in our sign up, that council office hours will be from 9:00 to 11:00 instead of 8:00 to 11:00 this Saturday. There you go.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm excited to announce. I've been on the Mental Health Access Center Advisory Committee for a year now. I'm excited to announce that going forward, I'll be the chair of that committee. So I think it's cool to have just a representative of Marion be a chair of this regional committee. But it's also going to be, it'll be a challenging year with the restructuring of the mental health districts in the state of Iowa. Funding will be different. Funding will be tighter in a time where mental health resources and funding is already a challenge, as I mentioned a few meetings ago. So if anybody, whether it's city staff, colleagues, residents, want to learn more, talk about those issues or tour the access center, we're always happy to accommodate that. So just wanted to point that out as well.
Thanks, Gage, and thanks for your work on that board.
Thank you.
Just to circle back to the proclamation and the Amateur Radio Field Day. Again, that is going to be held on Saturday, June 28th, starting at 1:00 p.m. and continues through until noon on Sunday, the 29th. What's really nice about that event, if you want to sit down, put on a headset, and receive a little instruction on how to use shortwave radio and have a chance to communicate with people, perhaps far, far away, but on the same planet, it's a great experience. So I really encourage you, anybody who is interested, you know, take family members, go out, spend an hour or two. It's really cool. The other thing is, I learned last year, rain or shine, they run the event. So it's really a training exercise for them to be able to provide critical communications in adverse conditions. So hope to see you there.
Thank you. Joe, aren't you an enthusiast? Are you a ham radio guy?
Yes, he is.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, yes. Okay, I was correct, all right.[1790.25] So we could have had you. If you showed up a little bit earlier, we could have had you accept the proclamation. Go ahead, Steve.
So I have attended, my wife and I have attended the Uptown Concert here in the plaza the last two Thursday nights. The crowd last Thursday was bigger than the week before, which is great to see. You, we continue to receive so many positive comments about that entire area, both from people from Marion and Cedar Rapids. And it's always gratifying hearing people from Cedar Rapids complimenting what's going on in Marion. But it's nice to see, the canvas, Nick and I walked over before city council to see the canvas that is now there. Obviously, the splash pad is shortly forthcoming, and then the art piece sometime towards the end of July, I understand. So again, again, to me, this is a shining star for our community and is certainly being recognized as such.
Okay, I think Will thought of something he wanted to share.
I thought of something.
He had some FOMO, so go ahead.
Right? It kind of snuck up on me and realized that this is the last meeting before this event. But on June twenty-eighth, Creekside Pride Committee is hosting a Creek Cleanup Day. It'll be at Thomas Park from nine to noon, June twenty-eighth, Saturday, June twenty-eighth. We'll walk the creek from Thomas Park down to Menards area and hopefully find, hopefully we don't find much trash, but get all the trash out that we can get out. We also have a generous donation from Cargill for bringing in a food truck. So if you come and help us out, we'll have some food for you to munch on. And then there is a signup sheet on, or signup link on the city's website so you can sign a waiver, or we'll have waivers on hand to sign, so we'll need a waiver sign for you to participate. But June twenty-eighth, if you can make it out, nine to noon, it'll be fun.
You should find some disc golf discs in that creek, I'm sure.
We will, we will. And yeah, wear wading shoes so you can get in the creek and, and clean up.
And I'll put a plug in for the upcoming Eat, Drink, and Be Marion, which is on the tenth of July, so tickets are on sale now. So buy your tickets, it's a very funny event, and it supports, that's a fundraiser that supports the Uptown District. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was last week, Kim and Mike, Mike Barcalo and I had the opportunity to travel with a regional group to Washington, D.C., the annual regional lobbying trip to Washington, D.C. to meet with legislators. And we have, over the last several years, have scheduled meetings at the DOT, talk about funding for Tower Terrace Road and our pending application for, for grant funding to help us build the three bridges. So it went very well. To me, it's a very useful trip because all, all the mayors of all of the metro area cities were there. And just the opportunity to, to, to just engage and talk with other regional leaders in that setting about regional issues and regional initiatives. And, and to be at the DOT together as, as, as all of us in one group, advocating for our grant funding, I thought was very powerful, and let's hope it's successful. It's very competitive, and there's way more applications and funds available as usual, but we'll see what happens. But I do appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I'm grateful for that, for that opportunity. With that, I think that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you for joining us. Have a great weekend, and we'll see you next time.